And honorings to do this evening, and so let's move on to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Our next item of business is to approve an agenda for tonight. This is an action item, and so I would be glad to accept a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion or comment on this agenda?
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six adjust the agenda to move the items from the Administration section to the Special Items section and approves the agenda as amended.
Thank you for your motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you both. You've heard the motion. Is there any discussion from other board members? All right. Ms. Crane, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Abstain.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries five, the aye, one abstain.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. We also need to approve a consent agenda. Is there a motion for this?
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you both. Are there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Next item of business, we've already been able to hear from some students, and we're going to get to hear from several more. So I would invite our Council of Student Representatives to come forward and give their presentation.
Hello. Thank you for having us. My name is Sydney Martin, and I am the president of the 2018-2019 Council of Student Representatives.
I'm Katie Canterbury, and I am Vice President of the Council of Representatives.
I'm Jennifer Sample, a part of the 2018-2019 Board of Representatives.
And I'm Jasmine De Meyer. I'm the Communications Officer for the Council of Representatives.
All right. We want to start by giving a little update on our last event. So our event in March was a district-wide volleyball tournament hosted at Greeley Central High School. We invited high schools from all over Greeley to create teams of six to nine players, and we ended up with ten teams from almost every school in Greeley. The end result was Northridge. They won in our final game. And it was, we had an amazing turnout with both parents and friends coming to support the teams, as well as many students who wanted to be involved. So due to the success, we want to make this an annual event, so be looking for it next year.
All right. And then looking forward into the future, on Friday, we are going to do our final event for the year, and it's going to be an event for just the members of the Board of Representatives here. And what we are going to, we are planning on doing is heading to one of the nursing homes in the area. Not entirely sure which one yet, but that's in the works. And then we're going to just hang out with the people living there and like, listen to them and talk to them and just hang out and have a good time and make an impact with them.
So then after our last event, our last meeting will be May 7th. At this meeting, we will be inviting the new board members to, for the 2019-2020 year, or, yeah, sorry. And then there we'll also elect next year's officers and start planning for the new year.
And to wrap up our year on this board, we will have our banquet on Saturday, May 11th. Our location is to be determined right now, but I will be sending out an invitation to all of you because we would like for our Board of Education to be there. So yes, Saturday, May 11th from four to six. At that banquet, we're just going to go over the highlights of our year. We'll have pictures. We will also be presenting honor cords for our seniors, as well as an induction of the 2019-2020 Council of Student Representative Board. So yeah, we're excited to wrap up a good year. Thank you.
Ms. Pappas?
I just want to say thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for all you do. And I am so impressed about your volleyball tournament. I think I mentioned this before that I was wondering, and I'm so impressed. So thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Our next item of business is to name a gymnasium. Mr. Bill Osintowski, affectionately known as Mr. O., was a beloved educator in our school system. He taught at several schools, but his final school was Ann K. Hyman, and there is a motion coming to us tonight to rename the gymnasium at Ann K. Hyman Elementary after Mr. O. And so this is an action item. So to begin discussion, we'll need a motion.
I move the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the naming of the gymnasium at Ann K. Hyman Elementary School, the O-Zone, a place for fun, learning, and enjoyment as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, would you like to say anything before you turn it over to your staff?
Thank you, President Matthews. So we are really excited to have you come before us tonight, Ms. Ramirez, and to share this recommendation with our board. As you know, there's a process for the naming of district facilities, and they did come to me earlier this spring, earlier this fall, with a proposal to consider naming the gym after Mr. O. That was before he passed away. And he has since died, and we are honored to have some of his best friends and colleagues here tonight to talk about the honoring of his gymnasium as the O-Zone. So I'm pleased to introduce Ann Ramirez, our principal at Ann K. Hyman Elementary School.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Pilch. Yes, my name is Ann Ramirez. I'm the current principal at Ann K. Hyman, and we have several people here in support. We have three members of the original staff at Ann K. Hyman that are also here going to speak. So Erin Snyder and Sharon Wright and Susan May will all be accompanying me this evening as we share a little bit about our justification and our process. So first of all, just want to start out by saying Mr. O. was a favorite teacher who lit up every time he'd meet ya. Fun and smiles filled his door, games played on the gym floor, and his legacy we'd like to feature.
Hi, I'm Susan May, and I taught with Bill for six years, but I've known him, knew him for 35 years. Bill Osintowski, Mr. O., lived a life of people and kids first. A metter to section of passion with his playful spirit created a legacy to be remembered and honored. Mr. O.'s teaching career spanned 32 years, all in District Six at Jefferson, Scott, and Ann K. Hyman Elementary. His impact was felt far beyond PE classrooms in the gym. He was always so excited to meet each new student and their family. He'd get down at eye level of their smallest of students to introduce himself and welcome him to the school. And he was very proud of the gym, not his gym, it was our gym. And one of our favorite pictures of the opening of Ann K. Hyman was Bill walking in the gym with his arms wide open, celebrating the beautiful space. And Bill worked very hard at knowing all the names of his students, hundreds of students, but he was renowned for giving them nicknames, which he remembered their name and their nickname. And that was just another way that he showed students that they were special, that he really saw them. And it was rare to go anywhere with Bill and not run into a student, a former student, and/or their families. It even happened to be at Disneyland. What made this unique was that they had a need to connect with him. He'd always ask, or sometimes ask for hug, hi-fi, or high-five, or money when they left his class. After his cancer diagnosis, the opportunities for the students and families to show their love for him was very heartwarming. From the over 200 people, and I think there was a fire truck that came to his house to sing Christmas carols in December, to an overflow of more than 650 people at his service, they made their love visible.
I'm Sharon Wright. I also taught with Bill a long time. I've quit counting. But when I first met Bill, he had a ponytail that was fairly long. We have some justifications and some reasons we'd like to honor Bill in this way. There are many things that we do remember about Bill. His love of biking, stimulating conversations of books he'd read. He detested the smell of Vicks VapoRub in Play-Doh. His wisdom through the quotes that surrounded the walls in the gym graced his email signature. His quick smile, his tender heart for children, his gentle teasing, his unfailing good manners, the wealth of activities he'd offer at intramurals, and the wicked attention to details that made each field day a well of memories. These can be summed up by his sincere expression, "Can you believe that they pay me for this?" He dreamed of opening his own school and determined he would call it Mr. O.'s School of Fun and Enjoyment, and honoring Bill by naming Ann K. Hyman's Gym, the O-Zone. Our hope is that those who follow know of his belief in people first and fun a close second. We believe the question, "Why do we call our gym the O-Zone?" will provide an opportunity to tell even a bit of his story. We had a PE teacher called Mr. O. who was the most fun. He loved us and told us so every day.
So I'll share just briefly the process that we went through. At the beginning of January, a group of educators who had retired from Hyman approached me with a desire to honor Mr. Osintowski by naming the gym at Ann K. Hyman after him. I quickly reached out to Wes Tuttle, who guided me to our board policy for naming an area of the building, and he spoke with Dr. Pilch about that request and let me know that she was willing to have us move forward. Within a couple of weeks, we learned that Mr. O.'s health had greatly deteriorated and that his time with us would be limited. So we put our gym naming process on hold so that we could focus our time and attention on Mr. O. while he was still with us. After his passing, it didn't take very long for the group to get the ball rolling again, and on March 6th, a group of 13 educators, current and retired, school employees, along with community members, met for an initial meeting. We discussed our best hopes. We reviewed the steps from the board policy for naming an area of the building, and we created a plan that would allow time for us to seek community input, review the input, and get a proposal to Dr. Pilch and the board before the end of the school year. A Google form was created and dispersed for the community to give us input from March 18th through March 29th of 2019. The entire district community was made aware of this opportunity for input via the district webpage and also the intercom, a weekly email newsletter for all of District Six. Additionally, staff and students at Hyman, Prairie Heights, and Greeley West, our main feeder schools, retired teachers were informed of their opportunity to participate in the community input phase of this process. On April 3rd, the screening committee, of which these folks are our members, convened for our second meeting. We reviewed the 20 responses that we received via the Google form, and unanimously, the committee chose the name that we have shared with Dr. Pilch and are now presenting to you this evening. So should the board approve our recommendation, then we plan to hold a naming and dedication ceremony on Wednesday, May 15th at 4:30 at the O-Zone, a place for fun, learning, and enjoyment located inside Ann K. Hyman Elementary.
Thank you all. We'll open this up for board members' questions and comments. Mr. Hayfley?
I taught with a lot of people in my life. And Bill was one of the finest educators that I ever spent time with. And we talked about in our meeting tonight how relationships matter. And it didn't matter if they were five, six, 60, male or female, brown, white, yellow, green, blue. Bill loved them. And everybody loved him. My wife taught with him for over 11 years. And his one true flaw was, he liked Spam. And so Darling Delia decided that she was going to have a contest, and what they did was they created Spam artwork. And so it was all over, and I saw it. It was on cardboard boxes, and they brought it in, and they took it to his gym, and there were like 20 boxes of Spam all over the gym. Well, little did they know, over the weekend, if you leave Spam out, you have more flies than you can ever find in the entire world. So he wasn't really well-received on Monday morning. But I will treasure my relationship with Bill, and he will be missed by many, and I think this is a dynamic idea that I will vote yes on.
Thank you, Mr. Hayfley. Are there any other comments from board members? Ms. Pappas?
I guess I just would like to say thank you. Thank you for doing this. It's important.
I would echo that. Thank you for this opportunity for us and for your school and the chance to honor Mr. Osintowski. And there's no other discussion, it appears. So Ms. Crane, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
So please put on your calendars, Wednesday, May 15th at 4:30 PM. We will see you at the O-Zone. Thank you.
We have some additional naming to do tonight, and so... We have some additional naming to do tonight, and so I would like to invite forward our representatives from the Pooter Learning Center Foundation. But to undertake this action item, we also need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evans School District 6 approves the Pooter Learning Center facility area and names and contract as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, would you like to say anything further about this before we turn it over?
Thank you, President Matthews. Just really excited to officially name the new facility at the Pooter Learning Center, the InStem Station on the Prairie, and really honored to welcome so many of the board members for the Pooter Learning Center here tonight. I know that Ray Shillard and Mandy Hydock, both staff members for District 6, will come forward and share the presentation tonight. And you all will notice that Mr. Hayfley will abstain from the vote because he does serve as chair of the Pooter Learning Center Foundation at this time, and this recommendation does come to us on behalf of both the Pooter Learning Center as well as the foundation. So Mr. Shillard and Ms. Hydock, I'd like to invite you to the podium, please.
Good evening, President Matthews, Dr. Pilch, and members of the board. I'm delighted to have Ray Shillard here with me this evening to discuss the relationship of the Pooter Learning Center with District 6. Just a little brief background, Greeley-Evans School District 6 owns and operates the Pooter Learning Center with the financial support of Windsor-Severance, Johnstown-Milliken, and Eaton School Districts through an intergovernmental agreement which was entered into in 2005. The expenditures of the facility are proportionately allocated amongst the four partner districts, which allows unlimited educational opportunities for the students of these four districts. Additionally, many other districts and programs pay a fee to utilize the facility, and Ray will talk a little bit more about that.
Well, thank you for letting us present this to you today, and Happy Earth Day. Hope it's every day for you as it is for us. So the Pooter Learning Center obviously focuses on K-12, focuses on K-12, and our students, we do get a host of students from UNC for internships and CSU, as well as our high schools in the summer. But our main focus is the K-12. All our programs are inquiry-based, student-centered, and earth systems approach. And as we do that, we think we're an application site for all the excellent activities and programs that are going in our schools. So with that, we also do some outreach programs where we go to schools for their science nights or for their back-to-school nights, and we affectionately call it our roadshow where we bring snakes and skins and no puppy dog tails, but everything else comes along with us and gives the chance for us to bring the Pooter Learning Center out to them. We also do some other programs that are a little special, and one of them is, that you saw tonight, was the caring for a watershed program, which is working with high school students and actually giving them a chance to make a difference in their environment by giving them money to go out and do that. So pretty neat, and you saw too, both Rachel and Emma are doing an outstanding job with that. Another program we have is WellWatch, where we have wells out at schools, not only in Greeley, but all the way down to Brighton and all the way over to Windsor. And our person that's in charge of that is Chuck Call. He's the guy in the back, looks like Kenny Rogers, but he's Chuck Call, former District 6 teacher for many years at McCullough. We started this whole thing in 2005 when the rotaries got together. At that time, there was only three rotaries. They got together and did a fundraiser to actually build in one year the Hazelton School, rebuild it. And at that time, that school year, we had 6,000 students that came from our four partner school districts. Last year, 2018, we had over 30,000 students that we worked with. So the old saying, "Build it and they'll come," is very true in this case. We don't think we've reached all the kids that we'd like to, so we'll keep growing. And part of that growth is due to some of our folks that are here today, and I'd like to introduce the Board of Trustees. And if they could stand so everybody could see them on TV land. John Hayfley is our board president this year, handsome John. And then Lynn Perick is here, yes, former teacher at one of our elementary schools. Larry Askewson is our board treasurer, and Karen Trussler is a trustee and former superintendent at Windsor-Severance Schools. Ted Gilan, the kids like to call him Teddy G., and Charmaine Coppum, our board members and our emeritus. Our former president of our board was actually Dan Austin, who was our first and our founding board president. So with those, they did the leadership for building, actually, our Hazelton School with the Rotary and now our InStem Station. And I'd just like to say a few words about the construction of that. Dan just leaned over in today and says, "We now have raised $1.8 million." And Dan was the leader of that, as well as John Coppum. And John Charmaine's husband unfortunately passed away before the building could actually be completed, but he was there through thick and thin and helped us raise that $1.8 million that we're able to give to you today as a continuation of the Pooter Learning Center program. So it took the whole community to build that building, and I think it's a comment, a statement that of what a neat community we do live in. And we should all be very proud of the barn-raising community that we live in, that people are willing to step forward for stuff, things that make a difference in our kids' lives. So we really appreciate the community for what they've done, and these folks are really volunteers for their leadership, but also their passion, and they are leaders. If you ever want a tour of the PLC, Ted Gilan is always available to give tours. If Ryan Brennan, our development person, is not available.
So presented to you this evening is a facility use agreement for the InStem Station on the Prairie. This agreement allows the Pooter Learning Center Foundation to use the InStem Station for fundraising activities to support the ongoing efforts of the PLC. Revenues generated from the fundraising efforts will support operational expenses and capital campaigns. Additionally, we present to you the naming of the Pooter Learning Center facilities and areas document. There have been many instrumental donors and supporters of the InStem Station on the Prairie building, and we respectfully ask for your approval to name these areas in honor of their monetary contributions and the many hours of volunteer efforts.
So do we want to give the presentations now?
We need to.
Oh, we need to give the occupancy?
Approval.
Approval.
I think we should, so I think I should first say thank you to all of you. This really is an example of what can happen when a community comes together, not only with one school district, but with several districts, to build out a program that was very successful, and now look at it. I mean, it's beautiful, it's amazing, and it's truly remarkable. So thank you. Thank you to all of you who have committed to this. And it's my understanding that you have a desire to name the classrooms, the parts of the building out there, for some of the folks who have worked the hardest to bring this to fruition. So I think what we could do is take a board vote, and then I'd like for you, Ray, to recognize those individuals in the manner in which you would choose to do that, okay?
Is there any discussion from board members? Dr. Richard?
Just a comment to say that we do a lot of great things in our classrooms, in our schools today, but to have this asset of the Pooter Learning Center is an extraordinary piece that we can add to the education for our students, a chance for them to get outside into nature and see those natural systems that support all of us. So thank you for that and for growing this program since 2005. Yeah, the foresight to see that and to build that and to grow that into what it is now, and the blessing that that is for all of our students as they come through. So thank you.
Ms. Mash?
I just thought I would share that I, as a parent, I've gotten to come to the PLC with my kids. They go monthly with their school, and every single time, there's five different stations that are completely new. They can come up with what the theme is that the kids have already been learning in the school. And I mean, I had a blast looking at little tiny worms with a microscope and testing the water quality and seeing the bald eagles and, yeah, and it's all the investigative approach, which is so great. The kids are so invested, and I just think they come away with so much. So thank you very much.
Ms. Solis?
Just thank you to everyone and how hard you work. It really took consciousness and intent to really get to this point, and to see that flourish in our kids, with them being conscious and intentional in making sure that they're doing their part for the earth, is just an amazing legacy to pass on from generation to generation. And I look forward to seeing the upcoming things that happen and the ideas that kids come up with, just with their participation with the Learning Center. So thank you.
And I would just add my own thanks as a parent, echo Ms. Mash's comments. It's been great for our kids. It's a great complement to our environmental science classes, and hopefully, we are bringing up a generation of citizens who care about this earth, and this is a huge part of that. So thank you.
Dr., oh, we need a vote. Sorry. Ms. Crane?
Mr. Hayfley?
Abstain.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries five aye, one abstain.
Thank you, Ms. Crane.
Now, Dr. Pilch, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. So, you know, I started the evening talking about leading from the seat you are in, and Ray, really kudos goes to you, because without the right leadership in place, this would have never come to be. You have truly led and led this work. And I know community members have come alongside you and supported you, but you had the vision, and you've led this. So thank you, and thank you for doing this. And I'm going to turn it back to you now.
Well, thank you for those kind words, but it truly was a community effort, and I'm very proud to be Greeleyite, and I won't go as far as John Hayfley says, I'm going to die here, but I'll be here a long time, so. We'd like to honor some of the people that were here today with plaques for the rooms, and one of them is Dan and Deb Austin. Could you come up, Deb? And Thrivet, as you come into the building, it's the Welcome Center. We like to say it welcomes you in and to find out what the outdoors is about, but hopefully, it invites you to get outside, because if you come to the Learning Center to be inside, you probably came the wrong place. You should be outside. And the Welcome Center is supported by Dan and Deb Austin with Thrivet, and they were what we consider our bald eagle level winners, our donors, winners. So thank you very much. And our next donor that's here is Charmaine Coppum, and her family was instrumental. John gave many, many hours, went out and talked to many different clubs and groups, and often with Karen under toe and in toe. And John was instrumental, and after he passed, his family decided they'd like to help out even more. And so if you come out, we have a very special room. It's called the Coppum Creative Center, and where all our great ideas start, and hopefully, many of those kids that come out there will be able to do some problem solving and brainstorming in that same room. So thank you, Charmaine. The other rooms are named the SRC Energy Great Hall, La Prino Classroom, the Robert and Dee Dee Bischoff Wet Lab, the Shields All Sports Patio, and the Dr. Lee and Carol Schlosser Front Range Geology Mural. So please come out and take a look at those. So if we could have Board President Matthews, would you come up? And we'd like to present you with our occupancy, certification of occupancy for the InStem Station on the Prairie. The InStem stands for Inspired by Nature. So we think STEM is a really important part of our education for our students, but it's really been done for many, many, many generations and eons by nature. And so you can copy that and learn from that. So the station means it's not the only place, but it's a way to get to the outdoors and build a relationship. So station is just like the old Prairie, our Pony Express stations along the way to developing that relationship with the outdoors. So on behalf of the foundations and Dan Austin was the president at that time, and so was Karen Trussler.
Thank you very much.
So thank you very much. Now it is your building.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mandy.
I just wanted to say thank you very much for, this wouldn't have happened without the strong commitment by the District 6 Board of Education. And this one and the ones before you truly made a difference in a lot of people's lives from, we have a 100-year lease on the ground, and I think it'll still be going strong 100 years from now. Thank you very much for your dedication.
It is a community effort, and we're glad to be a part of it. Our next item of business is the proclamation of Educator Appreciation Days. And this is an action item, so I would be glad to accept a motion to begin discussion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evans School District 6 adopts the honorary proclamation declaring that Educator Appreciation Days be celebrated in the district during the month of May 2018.
Second.
Thank you both. We should read this motion. So would someone be so kind as to open that document and read it, please, for us?
I'll read it.
Thank you, Ms. Mash.
Sure. Honorary proclamation of the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6. Then should I read through the days as well? Okay. National Physical Education and Sport Week will be May 1st through 7th, 2019. National School Lunch Hero Day, May 3rd, 2019. National Teacher Appreciation Week, May 6 through 10, 2019. National School Nurse Day, May 8th, 2019. National Educational Bosses Week, May 20 through 24, 2019. Whereas a well-educated public is essential to the preservation of our national freedom and our democratic system of government, and whereas the people of the United States have recognized that free access to a public education for all children is a vital component of a strong and vibrant country, and whereas the Board of Education recognizes and honors the important impact that teachers have on our children's education, and whereas a rich and well-rounded education includes curriculum, instruction, and support for the physical health and well-being of our children, and whereas children's education and the success of their schools is also dependent upon exceptional and dedicated leadership at the school and district level, and whereas it is appropriate that teachers and educational leaders be publicly recognized for their dedication and commitment to educating all students. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 proclaims the following national recognition dates to be celebrated and recognized in our local schools and communities of Greeley and Evans, Colorado during the month of May. The dates that I previously set.
Thank you, Ms. Mash. We just discovered a typo.
Not in the proclamation.
Not in the proclamation. You will not have to read that again, but in- Not in the proclamation. You will not have to read that again, but in the motion itself, we said May 2018, and it's actually May 2019. So, would someone reread that motion?
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District Six adopts the Honorary Proclamation declaring that Educator Appreciation Days be celebrated in the district during the month of May 2019.
Second.
Thank you all. We'll now open this up for discussion and comments. Ms. Pappas?
I guess I would just say that, of course, this is, of course, we'll support this proclamation, but how important it is that we remember how many people are important to the well-being of our children and the education of our children. So, I appreciate that we have this proclamation and these dates to appreciate the people that have been named. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Solis?
I think it's a moment where we can never do enough to thank everyone for what they do for our kids on a daily basis. I hope this recognition, though, at least helps a little bit, just to remind them that we remember, we know, we pay attention, and thank you so much.
Mr. Hayfley?
The successes of School District Six are due to our staff. Be it the graduation rate, the reduction of the dropout rate, the success of all the different populations we work with, it's thanks to our staff that we're successful, and we're very blessed to be able to say that we are District Six.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? I don't see any. I would just echo those comments that we can never say thank you enough. We know that our teachers and our bus drivers and the people that run our cafeterias and the people that keep us safe and all the people who are in charge and in our administration, we know they don't do it for the thanks. They don't know that they don't do it for the adults. They do it for the kids. But we're, as adults, we're thankful, and we appreciate them greatly. Ms. Crane, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Next item of business is to cancel our June 24th, 2019 Board of Education meeting, and so this is an action item, and we'll need a motion to begin discussion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District Six cancels the Board of Education meeting scheduled for June 24th, 2019.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on this motion? All right. I will only say, since I have plans on the 24th in Florida, I'm glad we'll cancel it. Ms. Crane, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Next item of business are the revisions to some of our policies and regulations, and this is also is an action item and will require a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District Six approves the revisions to Regulations AC-R, Non-Discrimination, Equal Opportunity, Complaint and Compliance Process, and Policy AEA, Standards-Based Education as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any comment or discussion from board members on this Dr. Richard?
Just a point of clarification that it's really just updating of language.
Correct. Yeah, correct. It is based on recommendations from our Colorado School Boards Association.
Any other comments? Seeing none. Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Our next item of business is to approve a contract with Unify Energy Solutions. This is a contract that will provide and install building automation systems and controls in several of our elementary and K-8 schools, along with Greeley Central. And we will need a motion to begin discussion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District Six approves the contract for Unify Energy Solutions LLC as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, would you like to say anything about this before we begin discussion?
Thank you, President Matthews. I'll just say that, you know, this is something that we've long wanted to do in District Six because over time, it will actually save us money and save energy. We will have lower energy usage as a result of this contract, and because of the mill levy override dollars, and this would fall under safety and security, we are able to actually do this, and so we're excited to do it. We are spreading it out over two fiscal years, as you see in the contract, so we'll pay for part of it out of this year's mill levy override dollars and the remainder out of next year's mill levy override dollars.
Any other discussion or comments? Dr. Richard?
Well, one small question and then one larger question. So, my small question is, when in Exhibit B, it has the rate sheet and it has the location of the different places where the updates will be made, there's a location that's listed as School Dude Integration. What is that?
I think that's technology, actually. School Dude, it's a software program, isn't it, Megan and Kent? Yeah. So, it'll integrate with School Dude.
I went through and thought, well, that's interesting.
Yeah. So, basically, they're saying that they'll be able to run with our systems, which is, one of our systems is School Dude.
School Dude, okay. And then the second question was about the selection process. Was this a sole provider or lowest bid?
I'm looking to staff. Did we do, was it sole provider or was it?
We had a bid.
Yeah, a bid process.
The lowest bid.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Richard. Is there any other comments?
Question answered. Ms. Sponsor, Mr. Henson, would one of you come to the podium and answer, please? Or send me a smoke signal or something so I can answer?
So, the question was, what's BAS?
No, the question was, did we use our formal bid process for this or sole provider for this?
No, we used our formal bid process for this.
Was this the lowest proposal?
Yeah, I believe it was, yes.
Mandy's nodding her head, yes. Our finance director back there, yeah.
Thanks, Mandy.
Any other questions?
Any other questions or discussion?
Thank you.
I would again like to thank our voters for that MLO and for those funds. Again, they continue to allow us to do things we could not do before, and we are indeed grateful. Ms. Crane, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
All right. That is all the business we have tonight. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you for your PLC support. Thank you for your PLC support. We should also know if the way...
Hey, so my son, you know, he's writing, for his watershed projects, writing a musical piece.
Cool. That's awesome.
They funded the...